This is not a continued case like the former one. This is a brand new one. Case number 24-4A, the petitioner being David Mulcahy. It's David Mulcahy. Here I am. Look at it. DBA, O'Dear, South Shore. And when I saw O'Dear, I thought, this must be a temple or something. But O'Dear, South Shore, Gulbox 340, Kingston, Mass. 364. Petition is requesting a variance pursuant to sections 5222 and section 2023 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 157 North Main Street in Carver, which is an assessment map, 24 lot 4A, to construct in addition to the rear of a pre-existing non-conforming residence in a highway commercial district set addition for the purpose of an office and the storage of business materials. So, I observed that we've just been handed another section of our bylaws, which I assure the petitioner we are very familiar with, as we were with the other one. And who would like to speak for the petitioner to begin with in this case?
I would. For the record, my name is Richard Sirkie, and I represent the applicant. And you'll think that you're listening to a broken record, but in this matter, I have to tell you that I don't believe we need to be here either. But it's slightly different because the applicant in this particular case is already before the planning board because the applicant realizes that site plan approval is needed. The site plan approval hearing opened. There will be a sit walk on Thursday evening, and the hearing will be resumed thereafter.
Do we know when?
Yes.
Thursday.
The sit walk is this Thursday at 5:00.
And the follow-up meeting?
Just one moment, sir.
That meeting is 23rd, 7 o'clock?
The 23rd at 7:00. Okay? Now, this is a petition, just by way, introduction. This is a petition to add to a pre-existing non-conforming residence in the highway commercial district, a building to the rear of it, for purposes of housing the petitioner's to store -- for equipment storage for the applicant's deer tick and mosquito control business, hence the moniker, "O'Dear," and for the manufacture and sale of bat boxes, any others, and other tick and mosquito averse products, and for associated office space. As I indicated, there was a pre-existing non-conforming residence, and there was a tenant there. And the goal of Mr. Mulcahy is, once his business is up and running, and he has gotten his feet on the ground, ultimately, he would like to convert the residence into an office. And at that point, the pre-existing non-conforming residential use will lapse.
Mr. Sirkie, can I interrupt you a minute and ask you to ask the folks in the hallway, do I get here to move down?
Okay. Could you folks move down a bit? Take the same plans?
They'll take those down. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sirkie.
Sure.
We share.
Now, let me tell you why, and again, this is slightly different from the previous case because I'm already before the planning board. In the previous case, there was no other board other than the Conservation Commission that we had been before. We are seeking to erect a craftsman/tradesman shop behind this existing residential structure. And the first page that I've given you, of course, is the use table in the zoning bylaw, which says that a craftsman/tradesman shop in the highway commercial district, which is the second column, is allowed as a matter of right. The third page in the handout defines craftsman/tradesman. And it reads, "Craftsman/tradesman shall mean retail and/or service provided by a worker who practices a trade or handicraft, one who creates or performs with skill or dexterity, especially in the manual arts, such as a jeweler, cabinet maker, frame person, and so forth." Now, if you look at the third page of what I've given you, I've blocked out that definition or framed it in a way that I believe properly construes it. Craftsman/tradesman shall mean retail and/or service. This is a service operation, provided by a worker who practices a trade. Mr. Mulcahy practices a trade. The next word is "for," which means you don't have to be both a craftsman and a tradesman. You can be either. In our case, the applicant is a tradesman. He makes no claim to be a craftsman. And the second part of the definition talks about a craftsman, one who creates or performs with skill or dexterity, especially in the manual arts, et cetera, et cetera. If you're a tradesman, the definition doesn't require the creation of any product. And Mr. Mulcahy is not a craftsman. And the definition doesn't require that the person perform with skill or dexterity within the proposed facility if you're a tradesman and not a craftsman. So, we have an operation here. I told you what the purpose of it is for, to house equipment that will be used in a service business, as I described it. And I suspect, and only suspect, I know that that construction of the definition of tradesman is consistent with the construction throughout the highway commercial district and throughout town. You have many tradesmen who operate as a matter of right in the highway commercial district, whose operations are similar to that of Mr. Mulcahy. And we were told that we might want to come here because of a doubt about whether or not we needed to be here, although the feeling was that we needed a use variance. I don't think we need a use variance. I think we're allowed. We do need site plan approval.
Who told you that you had to come here?
I talked with Mr. Cole, and he consulted with town council. And town council read the definition far more narrowly than I think it ought to be. But I didn't have any direct contact with her. It was her to Mr. Cole to me.
As well as the zoning enforcement officer?
And the zoning enforcement officer.
Do you know, Mr. Sirkie? I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
We met here in this room with the zoning enforcement officer, the planning board agent, and the applicant.
Was the communication with town council oral?
Oral.
No written?
I'm not aware of anything in writing.
Are you?
Agreed. Same. I'm not aware of any writing.
Are you done?
Yes, I don't think there's a need to go further. I think the planning board is well-equipped to, after taking the view, resuming its hearing on the 23rd. We have, we, we're in the process of meeting. We have met with the fire department and all of the other, we've met with the Conservation Commission. I believe there's an order of conditions that's been issued. So, we're going through the entire exercise. I just think that this is an unnecessary stop. Sorry to say that to you twice in the same evening, but in a way, it does make your evening easier, I hope.
Thank you. Our members, questions, comments?
The last hearing where you said you didn't need to be here, I was inclined to send you back and get further comment. Now, I'm a little, you know, a little more unsure this time because the planning board sent you here?
No, no, no. It was my conversations with Mr. Cole, and Mr. Cole, in fairness, he indicated that he didn't have any principled objection to this project at all. He was just concerned about hanging the hat on the right hook or hooks, all right? And I respect that. But I just don't think that this is something we need a use variance for. We're in the highway commercial district.
And I don't think it was just Mr. Cole. I think when we met with the zoning enforcement officer, they took a very narrow view, as we've been saying, and pretty much did not want to make the decision on it and referred us to you because it doesn't say you can have O'Dear Tick Company at this location in this building. It's not so specific in the zoning bylaw. So, they wanted to defer to you.
And we have no, we've been given no information from Mr. Cole. We've been given no, nothing from what, did he refer to council, did you say?
Well, Mr. Cole, or Mr. Cole, I think, talked with someone at Copelman and Page. And she opined that because we didn't create a product, we weren't like a jeweler, that we don't fit within the four corners of the highway commercial district. And I just can't believe that.
What other questions or comments to board members?
Oh, I have some.
The floor is yours.
Oh, thank you.
I haven't gone into the merits here because I wanted to add this initial discussion first.
Well, do you want to, which way do you want to do this? Do you want us to question the applicant, or do you want to finish your presentation?
Well, what are you waiting, are you waiting to hear for a full application as though we need to be here, or do you want to make an initial determination as to whether?
I don't, I, Mr. Sirkie, I don't see sending you back this time, as we did in the previous hearing, because I think they're just going to say, come back here. We sent you back in the previous hearing to the zoning enforcement officer for a conversation that had not taken place over the last two months. And that now may need to be. This one, I need to know more about it.
Okay, then I'm going to ask Mr. Grady to proceed from here.
Now, first off, can I ask, who's the owner of O'Dear? Which one?
Mr. Mulcahy is the proposed purchaser.
I'm Kevin Grady from Grady Consulting, Civil Engineers, Land Surveyors.
The current owner is Westlight Development, Inc., Bozakian.
And is he showing the property to you?
Correct.
So, this would take place upon a recorded deal of the property to you?
Correct. And the transaction is conditional upon his use being, receiving all the permits.
So, you're not going to buy the place if you don't?
Correct.
Do you have a signed PNS?
Yes.
Then it should probably be made part of the record.
If you'd like to see it, I'll do that.
Go ahead, Ms. Clark.
Well, let me, let's just get a feel for what this is because this looks like to be a very big storeroom. And is this just a garage? Can you walk us through?
Sure. So, for the planning board, for site plan approval, the applicant would like to construct a 5,900 square foot garage on the back of this building and some associated office space.
Do we have a picture of like what it would look like, street model?
We do not have an architectural underwriting.
Do you think I was above, something like, if you were in front of the house, you're going to be able to see the roof line of the radars and set higher?
Photos that, the, well, the intent is to keep it behind this building as it is. I don't believe we have a pitch on here or anything, so it's not going to be, you know, projecting well above this house. I can't say for certain that none of it is going to show, but this is a full walkout in this location here, a partial here, so it isn't, you know, above. And the details of the framing and the roofing, we have not gotten to there. Before we spend money on the architect, we're seeking some other things. I mean, we could prepare that if we discuss it.
Is this stick-built? Is this a morton building?
The idea is it's a metal building, like a mortar, or a space building.
Okay, good.
So, Mr. Mulcahy has a deer and tick business. Basically, they have trucks that they house here at night, and then they exit and they go to your property, and you have, you get Lyme disease, like I did this summer, and you spend extra money on deer and tick treatment. His deer and tick treatment is, the major agents in it are essential oils. He can go over the product specifics with you, of the site plan. Basically, there's five bays of space to pull his equipment in and house it at night. And he's going to store equipment, materials, product, and they will fill the product in the garage, and then they'll exit the site and treat residential properties, commercial properties, whoever needs it for ticks, deer, mosquitoes. Why don't you come over to my house? See how this goes.
Where are you located right now?
Trucks are parked in Pembroke.
Pardon?
Trucks are parked in Pembroke. I run the office out of my house.
Good doctor.
So, we've been through Conservation Commission. We have an order of conditions. We've upgraded the septic system prior to the PNS. There's an existing system located approximately here in the parking lot, so it's a functional septic system. Site plan approval, we've been through one round. There's been a handful of comments. We've made adjustments to the plans, very minor. We reconfigured this portion of the building to make it wider and narrower, which pulled the building further away from the wetlands. We changed some rainfall amounts, which raised this basin about a quarter of a foot. We've added a couple of landscape plants, and we've gone over the emergency access with the fire department, detailing how they can access both sides of the building. In our last conversation with the fire department, they were happy with what we had presented and gave us their blessing on it. One of the items that we've discussed a lot at the planning board is what about spills of product, et cetera. This, the building is, in any commercial garage space, is required to have a floor drain system for oils, gas, out of a truck if there's a, you know, a leak from your car or your truck of either a drop of oil or anything, they want to make sure it does not go into the environment. There will be a floor drain system that collects any water, any water that mixes with a drop of product or a drop of oil or a drop of gas, and it goes through the drain system to a tight tank. It's a dual-walled tight tank with an alarm system in it. When this system, when this tank fills up, the alarm goes off. They call the license taller and takes it out and disposes it of the legal manner. So, any garage has, any commercial garage has this system it's required to. But it gives us a layer of protection if the board was concerned with that or the planning board or the appeal board. We have a lighting plan where we show where meeting night sky compliant requirements and how it's not impacting the butters. We have landscape plans, and I'm happy to go over each and every one of them if you'd like.
Well, I suspect that you're going to be asked to go over this again with the planning board, so I don't know how deeply we want to delve into this tonight. I think you've given us a pretty good overview of what you intend to do. Would you agree, Ms. Clark?
Yep.
What other questions or comments from other board members at this point?
This is going to be a commercial space only? You're not going to live there?
No, I'm not going to. I don't plan on living there.
No.
What are you going to do with the existing front of the building? So, the warehouse in the back is your office is, going to be in the front?
The front, the front part is currently occupied by a tenant. And ultimately, the goal is when she moves out, that will be made into an office.
Correct.
How long is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, you're going to have a renter in the front and chemicals in the back?
So, the product itself is peppermint and rosemary, soy, extremely safe. It's a FIFRA B25 product, falls below the, which is exempt, falls below the, what is the actual stating? Says that it's not harmful to the environment or to people. It's actually extremely safe to be around and in the containers that it's in, 30 or 55 gallons.
Let me just interject here. And I don't mean to be flip, but if this goes through, you better have liability insurance.
Yeah, I have to carry that in general.
Frank?
No, I...
I don't think he's having a tenant, but he's going to go in office. It's going to be a full office.
So, how long is your tenant going to be there?
That's the plan. The plan is that we get the building constructed and get on our feet, and then once we're stable and the bank's allowed, we...
That's driven by the bank?
Yeah. That gets driven by the bank, and then once the bank...
The bank wants to have a tenant to qualify for this construction.
So, the bank needs you to have some kind of an income?
Yes. They want to see, they want to see money out of the property. And that's the way that...
So, we've got nothing.
Hmm.
Well, while Ms. Clark is coming to herself, let me disclose at this point what my thought is. And first of all, I want to thank Mr. Sirkie for his lawyerly approach to breaking down the language of our bylaw. It's what has to be done, and it's an appropriate approach. But we have learned tonight for the first time that apparently town council has been involved in this and has attempted, although you disagree with the interpretation, has attempted to interpret this bylaw. So, for me, and again, speaking only for myself because these other folks up here have voices of their own, I'm not inclined to make a decision on this tonight. I would like to have the opportunity to communicate with town council and get some feedback from them about what their concerns were concerning this particular definition, how they broke it down. And believe me when I say this, I disagree with other lawyers for a living, right? So, if I think that he or she is wrong in their interpretation, then I will tell you that, and I will vote accordingly. But for the sake of allowing our town council a voice in this particular case, and again, we were made aware of this for the first time tonight, apparently there has been some outreach to our town council on this, I think that I would be in favor of continuing this matter for a short period so that we can do that outreach and get a better sense as to what the legal concern was as to this definition.
I agree with that. There also seems to be just too many moving parts. We have the property owned by one entity, rented by another entity, and wanting a use variance by a third entity. And there's just too many things flowing right now. I know you're going to tell me something.
Yeah, what I'm going to say is that there aren't that many moving parts, as you think of it. The issue of whether or not a use variance is needed is because of the proposed use of this new building. The residence, that has nothing to do with the legal question. The legal question was posed because of what's going to happen in this building. And the way, as I understand it, was presented to town council, town council didn't have all of these facts and plans and details about the residence and so forth. It was just a dry question based on comparing the proposed use with the definition, and that was it. I can certainly, no harm, I can write to her and give her more details, but I think the details of what you've seen and heard here tonight from Mr. Grady are really beside the point of what the issue is for her.
That's only my, I have to reconcile, you know, I have to reconcile it to Mr. Because generally, when you're talking about a craftsman or a tradesman, it's somebody who's working out of their own home. Now, this is a highway commercial district, so I know that the rules change a little bit there. So, this is, again, just kind of a definition area. I mean, in the use table, landscaping and, you know, greenhouse, which almost falls under this to me, is not allowed in highway commercial. So, I'm not, you know, again, just, I've got to wrap my head around it.
If you look at the aluminum buildings throughout town that are broken up into separate units, I think you'll find a lot of tradesmen.
And I will look.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments up here at the board? What about members of the public? Would anyone like to weigh in on this or give us an opinion or two? Yes?
I would just like to say, I don't...
What is your name?
Brian Butler, sir.
Hi, Brian.
I'm the next name on the list.
Oh, my God.
I don't know Mr. Mulcahy personally. If he looks at me, he doesn't know who I am. But I'm one of his customers, okay? Now, does he fall within the framework of what he's asking for? I couldn't begin to tell you. But I can tell you that from doing business with him, he's a man of integrity. Every time I've had a problem, he's responded right away. His trucks are clean, well, cared for. They don't need placards, and has a former state trooper that enforced that. I know what I'm talking about. And his employees are very professional in their approach to the property. Like I say, what that buys him, I don't know, but I just wanted to offer that.
Did you get rid of all your chicks and mosquitoes?
He's treated me for mosquitoes, and like I say, anytime I've had a concern, you should use them. He's right there to respray. In years, I've had a mosquito-free summer.
Thank you, boy.
How many employees would be working out of this building?
Working out of it, coming and going daily. Six of them right now, and that's a steady...
So, they bring in six trucks there?
So, what they do is they bring them, park them there in the morning, sit there for 15 minutes. They take the truck, they come back.
So, that's what the parking is for?
Yeah. At the end of the day, they come back, park their truck, still 15, 20 minutes, and they're on. That's about it.
Is any other member of the public who should be heard tonight? Anybody at all? Okay. I see no hands being raised. So, I would ask the board members to allow me permission to reach out to Mr. Cole, to have a conversation with him and/or town council concerning the definition and the interpretation of that definition in view of the conversations that have already occurred and the concerns, apparently, that were raised about the interpretation of the definition at their meeting. Does anyone have any objection to me? Having a conversation with Mr. Cole?
I have no objection. In that, we find out that they've spoken with them, and we do not have any kind of a report from either Stephen Cole or, you know, even a report of his conversation with whomever he spoke with.
Would you like me to ask you for some sort of letter or a report with regard to the definition issue?
I think so.
Does anyone want to be heard with regard to that suggestion by Ms. Clark? So, do I hear a motion?
I move that Chairman Grady reaches out to Stephen Cole and/or town council as needed for clarification of the conversation that they had with Stephen Cole. needed for, for the clarification of the conversation that they had with Stephen Cole and to provide a letter of saying.
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we also will need.
I take it you'll have the discussion
Yes.
through Mr. Cole with the attorney at Copland Page is Amy Quesel.
I know her, yes.
Will you hand, will you deliver to her the materials that I gave you?
I don't know if she has these already.
She doesn't.
Okay, then I'm happy to.
I'll still stand on point.
We have electronic copies of. If we're held back today, we can provide electronic copies of.
No, we just discussed them, we're good.
I can, I can.
We also need to have a motion about continuing this hearing. Now, I am mindful that the date of October 30th is close and we have a full docket already, at least four cases. So I'm, I'm kind of wondering whether we can push this off to our next meeting in November or is there some urgency to get a decision by the 30th of the month? What would you say? This is, this question I'm asking you, what would you prefer? Because otherwise you might be here until 11 o'clock on the 30th.
We'd rather be here at 11 o'clock on the 30th if you're willing to stay that long.
Well, we'll do our best to keep our eyes open. How's that? So, yes, we'll, we'll be happy to accommodate. So do I hear a motion to continue the case to the date of October 30th?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we are continued to October 30th and in the interim, I will reach out to the planner and/or Town Council. And I'll make sure as well that Town Council has given this three-page, four-page document that was delivered to us tonight by Mr. Serke. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any thought of maybe starting at six?
Yeah.
For the continued? Can anyone start at six for the continued? The other ones are close to December.
I have that. I'll come here and talk.
Mr. Serke, before you leave, back on the record, the suggestion has been made that we pick up at 6:00 PM rather than seven for our two continued cases. And you're involved in both of those.
Yes, yes.
So if six o'clock is convenient for you and your clients.
Right.
We'd be happy to start a little bit later, so we're not waiting around until 10:00 or 11:00.
A little bit earlier.
Yeah, a little bit earlier.
So you'd be starting, uh, we'd start earlier for the continued because the other ones have to go on.
That's even better.
Is that good for you?
That's good for me.
Well, we're happy to afford you that first.
Thank you.
All right.
Check with the Town Board for the schedule.
Okay, great.
We need to change the.
We just need to change the agenda, but we still have time. But we don't have to change any public numbers at any time.
Okay, so let's begin now with the last case of the evening, which is case number sixty dash sixty-three R. The petitioners are Linda and Brian Butler. Brian has already made himself known and there's Linda. Forty-nine Woodhaven Street in Carver. The petitioners are requesting a variance pursuant to section 2220 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at forty-nine Woodhaven Street in Carver. So this is your home, is that right?
That's correct.
Assessors map sixty, lot sixty-three R is where you're at.
Yes.
And you are intending or wishing to construct a new attached, attached two-car garage and connector handicap ramp on a pre-existing lot, the residence in the western district. So which of you would like to address the board? So Linda, why don't you come right up?
Well, we just want to talk about the technicalities.
Okay, well, why don't you give us an overview first and then this other gentleman can give us the technicalities?
Okay. What we'd like to do is to be able to add an enclosed handicap ramp so that we can use the ramp to get into the cars.
Who needs to use the ramp?
No one yet. He might, and I'm a lung transplant, so I need to avoid the cold air. So therefore, that's why the enclosed unit.
Why do you say Brian might need to use a handicap ramp?
Because he has a lung condition.
So both of you have a lung, a pulmonary?
I have a new lung, but.
Well, good for you.
Yeah. So, um, but the cold air is very passion on my lung. And so therefore, I'd like to be able to get into my car without having to, not just the cold air, the hot air as well. Be able to get into my car without having to be exposed too much to the air. There's always going to be a certain element of cold.
Your lung hasn't been bothering you tonight, has it? There's been a lot of hot air.
And I've noticed, you haven't heard me coughing in that one?
So you heard me coughing over there?
Yeah, yeah, that too.
How far away is your detached garage from the house currently?
I don't have one.
We don't have one.
You have no garage at all?
No. So this is all add-on. So what I'd like to be able to do is to be able to get into the car, whether it be summer or, or winter. But I also want to be able to avoid snow, having to get, be outside and take the snow off the nipples. So it's really kind of a practical request.
All right.
That I want to do it, reason why I want to do it. So did I answer your question?
You did, and now we're happy to hear about the technicalities from the gentleman standing in back. Can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Jeffrey M. Metcalf. I'm an architect and I have the architectural end of it, but I also have Arthur Borden here, who's going to talk about the, the site plan issues. So Arthur, do you want to start?
Arthur, nice to see you.
Nice to see you. As Linda indicated, this is an addition that she's proposing to the left side of her house. This is the existing house. The walkway in between, eight foot wide and a twenty-four by forty foot garage.
How many vehicles is that going to fit?
Three.
Three.
It's a big garage.
Tandem.
Yeah.
So it's like two, it's like the normal size.
It's two days, but it's one, so you.
It's long, yeah. Sorry.
We've surveyed the lot for them. We've marked the lot corners, located all the existing features on the lot. The variance would be for a setback of fifteen point nine feet to the side of the lot line here. As you can see that.
That the only variance you need?
Yes.
It's just that dimensional variance on the side?
Yes. And as you can see, through the years, the, the site has been constructed such that appears to be more, you know, parallel and perpendicular to the existing house than the lot lines. You would, looking at the fences, you would think the lot lines went this way. You know, the line is not a, rather it's a rectangular shape, you know.
The garage would push back. You'd gain some on the side.
Push back this way.
No.
Then we'd have to be pushed forward.
It would work.
Have to be pushed forward because the lot goes like this and the house is sitting like this.
Now, looking at that back. So.
It's fifteen nine back.
Push this way. I'm thinking more.
Yeah, the farther forward you go, the, the less, or the larger the setback becomes.
No.
His house is just about like this, it's square.
If the, I don't know, maybe I'm looking at this wrong and I'm not good spatially, but if, if the, we're looking at the garage being here, right? The proposed garage is here. If we were to push it this way, this way, wouldn't we gain more feet?
A little bit more, maybe.
See, if you, if you look at it here.
But this has to do with the ramp.
Then this is the corridor where the ramp is. And then if you, if you push this forward, this is the, this is the closest point, but as you push this forward, the further away this gets from the side, side property line. If you push it back further, this gets closer.
Does it have anything to do with how, is, is the ramp, the ramp's not existing now, right?
It is now.
So does it have anything to do about, I know how ramps have to be, what is it, three feet or an inch or something?
Yeah, it's, it's one twelve. It's not, it's not, it's, it's more of a sloped walk, but there is an existing door in the back corner that they're trying to reach.
Okay, so this goes in, this, this is how they enter into the house?
Yes.
As opposed to building the ramp out this way? Well, you want to stay inside.
But see, if you.
You want it enclosed, right?
Yeah, if you look at the plan here, this is, this is the garage. This is the corridor. So they, they come in here to a flat section, go up this ramp to come to this, to this existing door to get into the house.
Okay.
All right.
So, so it's got everything to do with distance?
Yeah.
As far as.
Yeah, and they're trying to do kind of a covered entry too because it would be a second way of getting into the house as well. And then we're just trying to build it as, we're trying to keep windows on the existing sunroom and just enter into the existing door.
So, okay, we go out through the kitchen to here.
Now, the application indicates that not only do you need side yard setback relief to fifteen feet. And it says on the sides. Am I looking the wrong page there?
No.
Yeah, I am.
Well. This one just says.
You could write side setback relief. Again, it's just that side dimensional relief that you require. Is that correct?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I do have some photos of, of the existing house. And I also have a couple of 3D images to show you what it would look like on the house.
You see, is that hard? That's only one of the two.
But from the front and from the rear, or from the side?
That's really. Well, it's a nice house you two.
Thank you.
Anybody else living over there? Just the two of you?
Oh, in my house?
Yeah.
No.
I was going to say, my wife gets cross with me. I can always move over there. It looks like such a nice place.
You're welcome.
Do you have an extra bedroom?
Well, you respray the air for mosquitoes.
Now, one thing I, I just want.
Are these photographs in, renderings for the file?
Yes.
We'll take them.
Yep. And this is, this is the front elevation, what it would look like on the street. Similar to.
Sorry. Oh, I thought they were in here already. I'll take them back. I'm sorry.
No problem.
The one question I have, Eric, maybe you can help me. Is there a, a bylaw that says like an addition can't be in front of the main dwelling? Or is that just unattached?
It's unattached.
An unattached dwelling can't be in front of, an unattached addition, okay, so this is.
Anything else you'd like to say?
Well, just wanted to say that we're, you know, we're going to try to use the same materials as the existing house so that it fits in. And again, just a covered entry here for a second means for anyone visiting. And then if you notice in the, that front picture of the house, the existing drive as it, as it comes up, we're, we're not in need of having to do any other additional paving because the existing paved area stops right here. And as it turns out, it's right in the front of it. So, you know, the existing driveway will remain as is as well, so we're not adding any other additional paving as well.
And can you tell me where like the septic system is or if the gas service or the electric comes into the house on either side or in the front yard?
The well for the property is right here in the front left-hand corner. Septic tanks in the back side of the pool behind the house. And the existing leaching area is helping this area underneath the shed.
Okay, so even if you tried to put it on the other side of the house, there's no way to make this conform. So this is the least conforming way to do it.
That's correct.
Doesn't make it easy. Okay, with a variance, there are some thresholds you have to get over. And one of them is like soil conditions, shape of the lot.
Topography.
Thank you, topography.
Which, if any of those applies in this case, it would give us reason to grant you the requested variance. That's the question we have to ask. We're not allowed under the law, both ours and state law, to grant any variance unless there's something atypical about this lot, either in terms of its topography, its soil, or the shape of the lot that would allow us to do so. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So make the argument.
Yeah, I, I would say in this case, it's the shape of, the shape of the lot and the position of the, the house on the lot. As this clerk mentioned, we looked at both sides of the lot and trying to consider, you know, which is the worst of two evils. And again, not having to do anything with the existing paved driveway, not having to increase it, we, we thought this was the best place to put it.
Make when the shape of the lot argument.
Yes.
To get through the chapter forty-eight threshold. A dotted topography argument and not a soil argument.
It's not sloped on the other side or?
No, it's a flat, it's pretty much a flat line, yeah.
Is it gas over on Woodhaven?
Yes.
Yes.
You guys have the gas at house?
Yes.
When did we say the septic was?
The rear.
Oh, it's over here.
Where's the gas?
The other side of the house.
What was the question?
Where's the gas?
It's on, we'd have to move it.
Oh, okay.
Well, there you go.
You know where the gas, can you show me where the gas comes in?
The gas, uh, well, I'm talking about the meter.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's where it would be.
Where's the, I gotta look at the house, house. Where's the picture of the house?
It's in that holder.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Right behind us.
What's there, the gas heater?
Yeah.
But isn't that where?
Yes, here. Right here.
Isn't that where you want to put your distance?
It's, um, yeah, so we're going to have to do something. Alls we're going to have to do is rig it over a little bit to the front.
So you're going to have to move the gas?
Yeah.
Does it come straight in, you know?
Yeah.
Come right out the street?
Yeah. And we have some letters of support.
We'll take them.
All right. And we have some friends of support, I hope.
Well, we're not done with you.
So they're moving the gas line and then you have other utilities? Phone, electric?
Yeah, we got, well, there's probably some in. The phone is the cable and that comes in on the other side of the house. Same thing with the electric.
Underground?
Um, no. We moved the phone line under. I don't think the electric is under. Right.
I have been handed two letters. The first is William and Sally Falconer. This is an undated letter, unfortunately, but it does say that they were unable to attend tonight, probably because they're watching the Red Sox and the Celtics. No, they say due to their work schedules. And they have no objections to adding on to the property at forty, forty-nine Woodhaven Street. And they finished by saying that they wish both of you the best of luck and that they look forward to seeing the new addition in the neighborhood. The other letter is dated, it's October 12th, is addressed to us from Linda and Terry Gary. I should say, by the way, going back to the Falconer letter, they're at forty-eight Woodhaven Street.
It's a cross.
Linda and Terry Gary are at fifty Woodhaven Street.
Fifty, that's it.
Please accept this letter of support for our neighbors Linda and Brian and their request for a variance. The proposed project of a two-car garage in Briseville has been explained to us. We believe that this project would increase the overall property value of the neighborhood. We live across from the petitioners. We have no objection to this request for a variance and fully endorse it. And then they give us their phone number, which should talk to them in a minute. And then they give us their phone number, and we should talk to them in a minute. We'll make these two letters, if there are no objections, part of the board file. Thank you for these.
Did I see a row of babbles on that left side? On your left side?
That's just-
Trees, shrubs.
Yeah, brush.
Are the trees gonna stay?
We're gonna take some of them down, and we're working with our next-door neighbor on that side, because we're working together to take down the trees necessary if everything goes through, so.
So I'm not sure that you really were clear enough for me in answering that question about what you intend to do by way of a vegetation barrier on that side, if you're allowed to build out closer to the adjoining lot?
Oh, maybe I can help.
Please.
Right up next to the left-hand side of the house now, we have quite a bit of mature shrubbery, okay, which is gonna have to be located, relocated because of the breezeway in the garage. So we will probably end up there along with the trees that we intend on leaving.
I actually have an alborist coming in if this all goes through and we take down some of the trees.
Let's say it does go, but would you be concerned at all if we were to condition the granting of your variance on a proper green barrier? Because you are moving quite a bit closer to your neighbor on that side.
Yes, I mean, that-
We have no objection, sir.
Yeah. I mean, we'd want it anyway, so. Yeah, and they want it. And we've sat down with our next-door neighbors and we've discussed this whole thing.
Well, you sat here tonight, you've been most patient. You've heard us talk about concerns with regard to folks who are maybe or maybe not building by right, but are building very close to property lines. And, you know, it's a small town, we want everybody to live comfortably and happily together. So that might be a good thing to think about doing, and that's why I raise it now.
We're gonna do it. I mean, if you want to make that a condition, by all means, because that's all part of our personal overall plan. And like I said, my girlfriend's daughter is an alborist, so she, I've already walked across the neighborhood on-
Well, it looks like you're halfway there anyway, because there is a lot of vegetation in this picture that's in Ms. Clark's hand that I keep glancing at. So it's not like you're gonna have to start from scratch.
No.
There's a lot of green there already. But I'm, again, I just want to make sure that we have privacy and proper boundaries when you are being allowed or when you are being asked to move closer.
Right. But I also want to keep it natural. In other words, not, and we, again, I talked about this last year, but they unfortunately couldn't make it here today, but I don't want to have a, from the backyard to the front yard, I don't necessarily want to have a fence. What we want to have is a vegetation fence.
What kind of vegetation you think of?
Well, one of the things that we talked about was putting up seagrass, because it blows in the wind. And behind the seagrass, we were gonna put up, what do you call those things?
Roadies?
A series of roadies, because they can actually reach up to a small tree level. And that would serve, so we'd have lower vegetation as well as higher vegetation.
And so this vegetation would be, please, on the board, where would you want it to begin and where would you want it to extend to?
I would say along the easterly boundary, and I would just simply say where appropriate as a screen. Because, I mean, without actually touring the property, I mean, she has asphalt up to, you know, 10 feet or so to the, anyway, so. I would just say, just as appropriate for screening.
On the easterly boundary?
On the easterly boundary. How big is your lot? Is it 60,000 square feet?
63,000 something like that.
Yeah.
Does anyone else up here have any questions or comments? Ms. Clark, you have anything further?
I can, I can go with the shape of the lot, and when you couple that with the need for a handicap ramp, which almost dictates the distances. If there wasn't a handicap ramp, they certainly could eliminate that walkway, the width of that walkway, and it would be right near it, much closer. So I have no choice. I don't need to see it. You brought some great pictures and renderings, I appreciate that greatly.
Mr. Muir is still examining. Ms. Mello?
I'm good.
My friend, Ms. Nellin?
Yep.
So. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing? Actually, before I take any motion, I remiss not to ask members of the public who might still be here at this hearing if they wish to be heard.
My name is Christine Pollak, and I live-
Hello, Christine.
I live at 54 Woodhaven, right up the street, and-
What do you think about this?
Oh, I think it's a great idea. I put a garage in and had to get a variance years ago, and- No, you weren't here. This was years and years ago.
Ms. Clark has been here since-
Oh, yes. My daughter went to school with her son, yes. Yeah. But anyways, I'm all for this. I think it's a great, I think it's a great, you know, idea, and I wish them the best.
Thank you for your input. Does anybody else have anything to add? Yes.
I'm Janelle Miller, and I'm-
Who's Janelle?
I'm 47 Woodhaven, so I'm their other neighbor.
That's right.
And I'm in full support of them doing this. I think we need to do these things to make accommodations.
I'd like to say, Patrick Caneley, 45 Woodhaven Street. I've known the Butler's since 1980, I bought my parents.
I'm sure you're wearing a Red Sox hat tonight. Have you been checking the score?
A little bit. I don't know if anyone's taping the game, so I won't.
I'm sorry, Patrick.
How are we doing?
Doing really well. Caneley. 45 Woodhaven Street. Sox are doing really well right now. So happy to report that. Yes, so I've known the Butler's since 1980, I bought my parents. Bought my parents' house actually in the neighborhood, so it's good to see Brian and Linda continuing to want to stay in the neighborhood. If you know the neighborhood at all, Williams Drive, Woodhaven Street, every house has changed so much over the years. You were the original builders, like my parents, the Butler's. And I'm happy to hear that they want to stay and add on to the house. I think as a homeowner in that neighborhood, it's gonna add value as well. But two observations, I can sit here all night and talk good things for other brothers, but two observations I noticed tonight. The first case, it seemed like if the neighbors had talked to each other, maybe they wouldn't be here, right? So I know Brian and Linda have gone out of their way to meet with their budding neighbors on the side. And, you know, Brian uses the all-natural tick guy, right? He's a little more pricey, I bet, than some of the pesticides with another mosquito company. Just goes to show how much they do care for sort of the greenery of their yard. The yard looks fantastic. So I think when Linda talks about a natural fencing, that when this is all said and done, it's gonna come out looking really nice.
What's the other thing you want to say?
Well, just that they're talking to their neighbors, and that when we talk about a natural fencing, that I think they're putting their money where their mouth is with going, as an example, using the, oh dear, all-natural tick guy. They do invest a lot in their yard today. So I think, you know, two other cases that came up before them kind of apply here in some respect.
I know, Brian, you used to wear a uniform.
Yes, you did.
You haven't threatened these people, have you, today?
Cheers, Chris.
And I've been in the neighborhood since 1980 also, so.
Who's counting, right?
And I don't want to leave.
Thank you all for your comments. And, you know, you've been here from the beginning, and you've heard this board struggle with some touring issues tonight. This one for me is a compelling yes. And I'm prepared to ask the board, assuming nobody else has any further questions or comments, for a motion to close the hearing. All in favor? Now, the first thing that we have to do-
Now it's gonna get tactical, but just hang on.
We have to make a finding, and I'm gonna ask for the board to vote on this finding. And Fran, I'll give you this language later on. I ask that the board consider, or a member of the board, consider making the following motion. That owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, and/or topography of the lot, but not affecting the district generally, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the petitions. And that relief may be granted in this case without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Do I hear a motion to make that finding in this case?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Ms. Nellin? Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, do I hear a motion to grant the requested side variance on the easterly side of the property? And we, they need how many feet? They need 15 feet, right?
15 feet.
15 feet. Let's give them 16 feet.
So 16?
16 feet variance.
Mr. Gordon, this is current distance, 15.9.
So let's, let's- Yeah, let's give them another inch or two. So we'll-
He's always right.
Grant a, this would be a motion to grant a variance on the eastern side of the lot of 16 feet. Do I hear somebody making a-
I'll make that motion to grant a 16-foot variance on the eastern side of the lot.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Ms. Nellin, you good?
Yes.
All in favor? Now, I have one other motion that I'd like a board member to consider, and that is, on the easterly side of the lot, since we are granting you this variance, we ask that the petitioner construct a green barrier, if you will, as necessary to screen the neighbor on that side.
Is this a condition?
Yes. Yes. Would somebody like to make that motion?
Possible.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Does anybody want to make that, Linda, be a little bit more specific? Are we all happy with a green barrier, meaning vegetation, green barrier, i.e. vegetation on the easterly side of a lot?
Within two?
As needed, and this is to be planted upon the completion of construction.
Do you want a design for that?
No.
Yeah. I'd say within two years upon completion.
They want you to do it in two years?
This is, I mean, you have to figure out what's gonna grow, what's gonna grow best. Two years. Yeah, season or so. You gotta take down trees, they're gonna let-
Yeah, within two years, I guess, is what the, what we want to do here.
After, after completion of construction? Upon completion of construction, what's the money?
Occupancy permit.
So this has to be completed within two years. So Fran, you want to read back that motion?
Sure, hold on. As a motion to grant the variance, a green barrier will be constructed on the easterly side of the lot as needed, within two years of construction after occupancy permit is granted. How does that sound?
Perfect. So moved.
And this would be a condition to the grant?
Yep.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good to go.
Here's what happens now. This decision will be written up and filed with the town court's office in the next, I don't know what we can have, or so, sometime. Once it's stamped, once it's stamped by the town court's office, a 20-day appeal period, all your neighbors, everybody on the Butler's list, will be mailed a copy of the decision. When that 20-day appeal period has elapsed, the town clerk will notify you or Mr. Butler to come pick up the original. That has to be recorded at the registry of deeds, taken down over on Overeast Street. Bring it in, record it. I think it's around $75 to record. And they'll give you the copy back, or get a certified copy of it, and you take that to the building department. So once, once your decision has cleared the 20 days, they give you the original, you bring it to the registry of deeds, you've recorded it, then your variance is legal, and the building department can issue you a building permit.
You can put that with the building submission?
Yes, yes. Because it'll require a variance, so, but you have to have it recorded.
That recorded copy?
The recorded copy. Yeah, they'll record, you just bring it right down, they record, it's recorded instantaneously, and then the recording information will be right there. On, if you bring an extra copy with you, they'll stamp it. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's nice to close up and I get that. Yeah, we're all volunteers here, by the way.
Okay, if everybody could withdraw so that we can finish up here. Thank you, and good night, everybody. Again, I want to thank Area 58 for being here and videoing this meeting. We're happy to have them, as I said before, and I think it's important for the town to see how the boards and committees operate. So again, thank you. I will ask if a board member now wishes to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everybody.